Let's check that.
I'm in a step length.
Okay. All right.
Reporting in progress.
So, let's get this meeting started. It's being recorded. If anybody else is recording, please let me know. Okay, um, all rise to the president. We're the U.S. United States of America. We're the people of which we stand as one nation. We're God and individual with liberty and justice for all. Please. It was two on hold.
Dr. Craft Rees?
Yes, here.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Here.
Todd Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Ferella?
Here.
Alan Ladizori?
Here.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Here.
John Mason?
Here.
Stephen Marantz?
Here.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Here.
Robert Ranzio? Mr. Stewart?
Here.
Sarah Tucker?
Here.
Kimberly Weatherall? Rich Peters?
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay, so, first responses from the audience. Anybody who would like to? Seeing you there here again. Okay, how about Sophie, the high school representative? Please report. Is she online?
Yeah, I am. Hello, everyone. Okay, so, March 28th, the National Honor Society at Wakona Regional High School had their babysitting night. So, basically, all the schools within the district, excuse me. So, that includes Sayanis, Crane, Maryville, Kittredge. They would bring their kids, and that would be from 5:30 to 9:30. And the National Honor Society members, they would watch over these kids. Um, the class 2026, the juniors in particular at Wakona, they are hard at work at planning the prom. And prom this year is set for May 25th, for five periods of time at a time. And the theme is the Mory Bra. The employee players, they have officially wrapped up the spring musical, Guys and Dolls, on April 4th and 5th. And I personally went, I don't know if anybody else really went, but I can tell you that it was truly phenomenal. And then regarding sports, uh, spring sports have officially started back up. And the first official track meet starts tomorrow. But so far, sports teams seem to be doing really well right now. They've had a few major wins recently. So, congratulations, everybody. That's it.
Thank you, Sophie.
No problem.
Okay. Next up, the financial reports, there were some warrants previously signed. And then gifts and donations. Acceptance of a donation from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission for a rural health grant.
We have resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the donation of $5,200 from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission for the rural health grant, as recommended by the district treasurer.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. Any questions? Question? Seeing you there. Sure, what's up? What's up? You gotta put that, you know, wave them with that. Throw something at me. Sure.
This rural health grant, what's that?
I heard. For everything.
So, this is mostly, um, what is organized by our nurses. And it's used for supplies for the nurse's office, mostly food, pursuits, like taking medication and people to go with.
Any limits? Now, baseline. Okay, um, roll global, please.
Dr. Craft Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Alan Ladizori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Stephen Marantz?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Accept authorization of scholarship donations.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the following scholarship donations totaling $1,700, as recommended by the district treasurer. Those notes are $700 for the Mitchell Dahlian Scholarship from Neil Genaway, and $1,000 for the Francis X. Manns Scholarship from Diana Manns.
Second.
Motion in second, and then put some limits in. Seeing you there here again. Roll global, please.
Dr. Craft Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Alan Ladizori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Stephen Marantz?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, next up is the secretary's board. With approval of the minutes of the regular meetings in March 15th, 2025, and March 27th, 2025. Can I get a motion?
Oh. On, uh, March 27th, I also voted yes on the interview question.
Please.
So moved.
So, I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Now, I'm gonna, okay, in a second. Then we have.
I made a motion, wait, let me make a.
I made a motion and.
Five seconds.
Okay, thank you. I'll do that. Okay, so amendments, let me get, we have one on us.
Just that I voted yes to agree, uh, interview question.
Oh.
My name's.
Alice White.
Yes.
Yeah, and I had, uh, some changes to make for the March 15th meeting. Under the rap report, um, the comments about Covington, when I met with them, um, I just wanted to clarify that they had asked about language. That's about adding language to the regional agreement regarding a possible refund if they had prepaid OPEC funds as part of their withdrawal process. And if universal healthcare became available in the state at a later date. So, they were just asking about the, uh, possible withdrawal there.
What do you want to change?
Uh, I'd send this to Beth, go over it. Okay, so specifically.
You want, you want, do you want to send it to?
So, what did, so you're voting, you're voting on crossing out, um, a line before which David just recommended crossing out. They asked whether they could pre-fund the OPEC for withdrawal, if that could be refunded, and whether there are any state single payer programs or some of their pre-funded retirement. That's being struck in, and then what David just said is being added. And then.
Yeah, in addition to that, um, it says they're also still discussing closing the school. And I'd like to just add, um, a fact that closing, a fact that closing their school, and add the words that they would, that has on the character of the town. Rest of the sentence is fine. The line about comment made about, I would add the words, um, town's not having a choice, or say, I'm closing the school in the town, and then strike the words, the possibility of another school closing steps set up in the regional agreement if that were to happen. Then scrolling down, at the INZIL meeting, I just want to add that Rich Peters was also at, um, what do you mean, so, so it's a little confusing, striking, adding, but, um, that's just.
Nope, I got it.
Thank you. Send that to us.
I got it.
She has it, yeah.
He sent it to me, but we got it amended.
I got it. Oh, good. Like, just so everybody knows. Okay. And can vote on that. All right, so now we're amended. Okay, twice amended. Okay. We want to vote on, we'll call vote on the amended minutes.
For the 13th, we can have a twice though.
Yeah.
Um, Dr. Craft Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Alan Ladizori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Stephen Marantz?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next up is the superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, first on my agenda, um, I'll just say a little bit about MCAS because this year, just to clarify, still, students still take the MCAS. It's just the vote was around the graduation requirement, so it's no longer a requirement for graduation. But we've, um, we've had a positive participation rate. Um, there's a new technology platform, and I, I do want to give a little shout out to Joe Sturgis. I know he's here somewhere because it requires a great deal of preparation, and your eyes have to be dotted, and your Ts have to be crossed, and also our administrative teams, because there were some changes. Everybody had to go through new trainings. And it's been really smooth. Even, we had this little blip where we lost internet for the, you know, the very first administration at Wakona. And I don't even know if all the students knew it, and, and because Joe was there with his team, um, and Principal Rob was out there, it, there was, it really was seamless, even given that. So, um, I just want to, you know, mention that, um, and it, it's just going really well, and kids are working really hard. And, um, we're, we're almost through ELA, you know, the thing, so next we'll, it'll be math. Um, the next one is just to please look at the dates for senior events. Um, class night, just for those of you who are, are new, and a little reminder, um, the, the four events that, um, school committee members are always invited to attend, one is class night, and those are awards, that's an award night for seniors. Um, the other is senior assembly, and senior assembly really honors, it's during the day, it's at Wakona High School. It really honors the spirit of the class and who they are as people, and, and, and they really participate. And the junior class actually puts it on for them, and it's, it is a nice event. Um, and then the other one is Evening of Excellence, and that is actually, um, those are awards for students who are not seniors. So, those are content awards for, for students in ninth grade through 11th. And of course, the last one is graduation, and we'll make sure that we send everyone, um, uh, an invitation for graduation. And we'll, I'll send something out, and, or you'll hear from either me or Beth or both of us. Um, and if you would just respond to Beth, whether, when you, when you do get that, whether or not you want to attend, and we'll make sure that we have, um, some great seating. Um, the next one, just a little, um, just a, a brief budget update. Greg and I have gone to Windsor. We've gone to Windsor once, we were gonna go twice, and they, they said, we, we feel like we have a full understanding of the budget. They haven't, we don't know at this point whether they intend to support the budget. We have been to Hinsdale, they again did not, you know, answer lots, they had lots of questions for us. They did not necessarily indicate whether they were supporting it. Uh, we went to the Dalton Finance Subcommittee. Uh, they unanimously voted to support the budget there. Um, we're going back to, we were also invited back to the Select Board in Dalton, and we'll be going there on Monday. And usually in the, when we see their articles, when we go to town meetings, it will indicate whether the Finance Subcommittee or the Select Board is, is recommending the school budget. And then Greg, I think, has just had some individual meetings, um, with some of the Select Board members. Um, last, I just want to say congratulations to Dr. Michael Penalt, my colleague. Um, you know, we know there's someone who cares as much as you do about the staff, the students, the community members, the families, the everybody's, um, and it's just meant so much to you. It's, um, it means everything to sort of pass the baton on, so I just wanted to say that.
Okay.
You're welcome.
And thank you, everybody. I, I just want to say that I appreciate, um, the thoroughness of, of the search. And, you know, aside from setting your budget every year, selecting the superintendent is, is the, you know, the biggest responsibility of this committee. And, uh, throughout the process, I, I saw how committed and dedicated all of you were to it. And, um, I, I'm obviously thrilled by the outcome and ready to go. And I, I really appreciate that at the end of the night, the unanimous show of support, um, that really tells me that, you know, despite where anybody might stand throughout the process, that we'll be able to work together to really get things done, which is really important, and I mean that. So, I'm ready to go, and, uh, we're already working on transitions and, and doing the work. So, I'm excited and, and thank you. Okay.
And I don't have big things?
Big things.
So, next up is myself, uh, floor of the chair. So, noted is the annual town meetings, and I'm gonna make a plea to everyone to make sure you go to your annual town meeting and recruit, uh, the parents in your district, folks in your district to come out and support the town meetings. So, you know, it amazes me every year how few people go to the town meetings. It's really important that we show up for our district, and the people who are involved with our district show up at the town meetings. It's really important. So, I'm just, next up is.
Rich, can I add one thing?
Sure.
Uh, so, some of our families reached out, and a barrier to, to attending town meetings is childcare. And so, we are going to offer childcare at each school on voting night, um, through the National Honor Society, um, a mix of students and, um, also, um, staff members who are gonna volunteer to provide childcare at Kittredge, Beckett, and Wakona. Um, and we're organizing that right now. We don't know if we have, um, that we're gonna make it, make it happen. So, that's it. On the survey, we'll go out to see the interest, but we're gonna try to take away that.
Great, thank you. Yeah, excellent. Thanks. So, next up on mine is the assistant superintendent search, and just, what they're explaining the process. For so, so folks know, it's not the same as a superintendent search. It's actually, um, up to the incoming superintendent. It, it's always up to the superintendent, this is an appointment by that superintendent for themselves. The school committee has to approve that appointment, but it's up to the superintendent to put forward candidates. Now, he may do a search, he may not, it's really up to him. So, the, the personnel subcommittee is gonna meet on this. On Tuesday, it's on our committee, it's, and we'll talk about it there, about, um, potential candidates and search of that at that time. Um, next, any questions about that? Yeah, laws? Okay, so next up is the, about the revised regional agreement. At this point, um, the three towns that voted it down, we're looking, Davis can speak to this, but I think the plan is to get the, um, agreement as it was revised onto those town warrants, um, coming through INZIL and Peru, to see if it'll pass again. And, and, Dave, if you want to speak to the work you've done and where it stands, that's fine. Um, or do you want to wait till the regional?
Oh, wait.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right, so, um, next up, we see reports, uh, we're looking at curriculum first.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, curriculum met on, on March 19th. We had a very full agenda. First thing we discussed was Green Umbrella Club's overnight field trip to Costa Rica planned for April of 2026. This is an eco-educational trip that April, uh, La Sage runs every two years. Uh, this year, this time around, she's trying to plan a slightly different trip to give students that went last year a different experience. She would like to take the students to a different sea turtle rescue, this time on the Pacific side of Costa Rica, instead of the one on the Atlantic. The Pacific rescue works with a different species, uh, sea turtles, the green sea turtles, that, and they nest during the day versus at night, where the Atlantic sea turtles do. This would make the trip nine days long, since the Pacific rescue is further south than the one on the Atlantic. Other stops would be a local school, where our students would converse and interact with Costa Rican students, canoeing a visit and a visit to a chocolate factory, and their possibility of one more activity depending on cost and time. Right now, cost is estimated to be about $2,500 per student. This does not include airfare or cost of transportation to and from the airport. Exact dates for the trip are yet to be determined, uh, but more than likely, but it's going to be over April break. Um, if it's going to be nine days, it'll go, start on the Thursday prior to April break, or eight will be the Friday. Um, just right now, uh, flight information for that time is not available yet, so she's trying to figure out what's gonna be most cost effective for students. Uh, assumption is about 25 students will go. Uh, Ms. La Sage and Mrs. Shannon, the Spanish teacher, will chaperone, as they have in years past. Um, we'll be employing the same tour company, uh, Mr. Rob likes his company, as they send him daily updates, and then they send photos to him and the families during the trip, so everyone can see what the kids are doing, and everyone knows everybody's safe. Um, only Wakona students are on our tour and tour bus, so the tour company doesn't combine groups. Uh, students are responsible for paying for the cost of the trip. Fundraising efforts to help offset these costs usually come from the parent booster club. Last time, they were able to raise about $12,000 to help offset costs. Uh, students also are able to apply for grants or obtain sponsorships for this trip, since it's considered a service trip and not, uh, just a vacation. So, um, Ms. La Sage is on, uh, if anybody has any questions, but we have a motion, so I'll read it, and then we can have discussion. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves an overnight field trip for Wakona Regional High School students, grades nine through 12, for an eco-tour trip to Costa Rica from April 18th to April 27th, 2026, as recommended by the curriculum Subcommittee.
Second. A motion in seconds. A discussion.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, have we done the trip to the Pacific side of Costa Rica before?
Um, we've been to the Pacific side. We haven't, I haven't been to this particular sea turtle, um, place, because we have always used the same, the same one. However, the company has used the, uh, it's called the OSA Sea Turtle, uh, rescue. And, and they've used this company several, all the time. It's a regular tour that they offer, which they teach. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing you, any online? Okay, roll global, please.
Dr. Craft Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Alan Ladizori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Stephen Marantz?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I've been planning, Ms. La Sage.
Okay, um, other items we discussed, we had an update on the NASA science pilot from, uh, now, uh, our assistant superintendent panel. Um, issues in science is the curriculum of choice, because it gives digital access to the, to curriculum lab materials. Won't, uh, and it, um, but it won't give teachers instructional materials before they have professional development. Uh, this way, they can understand the why behind the lesson sequencing. Um, if we can get the professional development done by the end of April, we can get the materials into teachers' hands prior to the end of this school year, and then we will be able to pilot the curriculum for free, starting in September of 2025. Uh, we just need to pay for the lab materials. Uh, if we are unable to get, uh, any PD by the end of this month, we would go back to evaluation of OpenSciEd. Um, uh, but, uh, the teachers are, really don't prefer, uh, OpenSciEd, they would rather go with issues in science. We'll get more of an update in May. And then we also, uh, had an update, uh, on the Wakona ELA piloting. Um, the Curriculum Council met on March 18th. There are four initial curriculum options, two are open source curriculum, meaning they are continually changing. One is more traditional with an actual tech, actual textbook, but also a digital resource component. Um, this particular curriculum is currently being used at PHS, Taconic, and Huzick. And then there's one hybrid option, uh, which is sort of in between an open source and traditional. Uh, Wit and Wisdom is kind of like this, uh, high, kind of like a hybrid, uh, ELA curriculum that we're currently using in the upper grades. Uh, Curriculum Council has four meetings scheduled, uh, and should be settled on one or two curriculum to pilot further in September, and again, more updates in May. Um, the biggest portion of our, uh, Subcommittee was around district competency determinations for high school graduation, now that MCAS, uh, can no longer be. Uh, so, uh, this discussion was led by, um, Assistant Superintendent Penalt. Uh, Massachusetts Education Law, Circuit 1993, required that students meet school and state competency requirements in math, uh, specifically algebra and geometry, ELA, uh, and science in order to graduate. Question two this past November removed, MCAS is the default way to measure its competency, measure competency. Uh, if competency was met, for students to qualify for a receipt of a diploma. School districts are still responsible to participate in MCAS and have, and scores for benchmarking purposes. All districts now need to come up with their own competency determination method for the 2026 school year and forward. MCAS cannot be, uh, the newly selected method. Frontier tried to do that and was sued by the MTA. Frontier lost that suit since question two struck down MCAS as the competency adds a competency require methodology, requirement methodology. Um, Assistant Superintendent Penalt, Principal Rob, and the leadership team at Wakona began formulating a plan based on already existing assessments, i.e. midterm and final exams. Um, ninth graders will have to pass finals in biology, ELA, uh, ELA 9 at any level, meaning honors or regular, and either algebra 1 or geometry. 10th graders will have to pass, uh, finals in ELA 10 again at any level, or either geometry or algebra 2. Uh, coincidentally, this is, uh, a similar methodology that was outlined in the Boston Globe for, uh, what they felt was the best, best methods for showing student graduation competency. Midterms will now be the winter benchmark and count for 20% of second quarter grade, and final exams will be, will count for 20% of fourth quarter grades. Finals will be given on our Edgeolastics platform. Past MCAS questions will, in Edgeolastics, will now become practice tests for finals. This is a good opportunity for the school to align teaching methodologies, as midterms and finals will now be more standardized, to ensure that all students, no matter what class level or teacher, are receiving the required education. Um, Matt, this Wakona Student Handbook will be updated to require that students sit for finals. Um, as some students, uh, in the past may have chosen to skip their finals, based on whether or not they felt they had enough, uh, enough of a score in that class to pass without taking the final. For those students who don't meet competency in class, the state is requiring these students be tracked in the EPP system as they move into 11th and 12th grades. Uh, now, the draft is gonna go back to the leadership team for further review and refinement for determination plans on non, for non-traditional students, students with disabilities, and transfer students. Uh, they will craft a plan for midterm and final exam creation with the content coordinators. Uh, they will also work out, uh, the question of student, uh, the question of how, what happens for students who take algebra 1 in eighth grade. Uh, because right now, we don't, Wakona doesn't have a way to capture if those students meet competency in that class. Uh, and they will also be discussing, uh, legacy students since MCAS, uh, who, since MCAS's inception, never received the diploma because they could not sit for MCAS. These are mostly students with disabilities, and we now have a chance to award those students who pass their classes. We now have a chance to award them a high school diploma. Any questions or further discussions?
Okay. So, uh, back to the science pilot. So, the pilot's free, Costa lab materials, is that comparable to what's cost now? How is that?
So, um, there's, it's been an update since we met in March, and actually, we're gonna, we're gonna have a curriculum meeting next week that we'll talk about, and the, uh, we had, uh, our lead science teacher actually went to the national conference in Philadelphia. Um, and really, um, is excited about shifting towards phenomenon-based practices, which are supported through OpenSciEd. Um, so, the team is now really interested in OpenSciEd, um, in a new way, and very enthusiastically looking at how to embrace it. Um, so, we, she, she's actually putting together a short presentation that I can give to you, so we can understand where they're at right now. And, um, that would be completely free. Um, and the, the lab materials are, are in line with what we're using right now. Um, right now, when we do a lab, we have the budget for that. There's a, there's a, uh, building science supply item for budgeting for science materials, and it, it wouldn't change very much, uh, with that material. And we, it would reduce the cost, have the free curriculum. But, so, since our last meeting, they've shifted their direction of where they want to go, and, um, all right, so that's not it.
What a difference there is, makes.
Yeah. The fun, the fun, the fun of pilot, yeah, in search of, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay, so, um, our next meeting, uh, will be, uh, next week, April 15th, at 7:00 PM on Zoom. Topics will be more updates, uh, on our science pilot, um, and then, uh, Principal Rob is gonna give our, uh, his preliminary New England Association of Schools and Colleges presentation, uh, to us, uh, and then another update on graduation competency requirements. We are also scheduled to meet on May 13th, uh, on, at 7:00 PM on Zoom, where we will continue to get further updates on ELA and science piloting, silent, science piloting. Um, and then, uh, more any other updates coming from competency determination, and then a draft of the code of conduct for elementary schools.
Great. Next up is finance.
Uh, finance has not met since our last finance meeting. Uh, our next meeting is still to be determined, but we should have that locked down in the next.
Uh, next up is personnel.
Um, oh, hi.
Oops, sorry.
Do that.
You can sit down, right over there.
Um, I mean, to a certain extent, it makes sense, they skipped over me, because we also have not met. But we do have our next meeting, um, next Wednesday, the 16th, uh, 16th. But we do have our next meeting, um, next Wednesday, the 16th, uh, 6:30, um, at NASA.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Personnel, maybe like glasses on. Personnel, um, we are meeting next, we haven't met since, um, the last meeting. Uh, we're meeting on Tuesday, uh, 11th for, um, contract negotiations. Basically, what, what's on here is the tenant contract, just want to let people know that we actually don't have a super tenant signed yet because we have to agree to a contract. So that's part of what's, what's going to happen on finance, personal. So I would also just give you a quick update on the negotiations with the pairs and the teachers using the, uh, interest-based bargaining. Um, both those, both those negotiations are going really well and moving very long. We're really close with the pairs at this point, and the teachers, teachers just started, but really, but the last stuff, and it's going really well. So, uh, let's leave it at that. So, all right. Any questions anywhere?
Okay. Except safety moments. Ludes.
Hi, everyone. Uh, we have not met yet, but we are looking to meet on April 28th at 7:00 p.m. on Zoom, where we will talk about a combination of a few, um, smaller topics, including some real programs update, quarterly bullying interaction, bullying and infraction report, uh, separately, more shock that would have been pulled outside in, and, um, anxiety and mental health review.
Good. Thank you. All right. Next up is the portability project. Uh, just as a heads up, we actually met with Stanford today, and I also spoke with the lawyer, and we are, will be sending a letter to Bar and Bar, uh, shortly. We're at that point now, um, to try and improve some of the money they have insurance. Hopefully they use their insurance to, um, pay a financial, you know, costs. Any, any questions there? Okay. We're reaching out.
Um, so, uh, so I've, yeah. See, I was in Peru. Um, Kim Adarola was there with the mains well, um, March 8th, Washington, March 24th, Winter 31st, and, um, that's Lylesbury was joining me for that one. The, the biggest issue is continuing the, um, the, essentially the fallout from the, um, school fund. There's a lot of hurt feelings always now, it's, um, it's really the biggest holdup. Getting regional, done. Um, it's more of an emotional response than a factual response. There's, there's better understanding about, um, not being able to put in a piece of popular vote, that's restricted by law. Until some changes in law changes. So that, that was Peru. Um, Washington, I met with the select board, the select board and the finance committee had, had a meeting at the same time, so I left the select board and the joint finance committee to kind of go over things as well. Um, the other issue, and I know, Greg and I have talked about this, about Asian, Asian, and, and you've talked about that here, whether that should be in the regional agreement, put me in the regional, does it have to be? Um, and there is, there is benefit to all, um, to have a, um, one contract or one negotiator for all contracts. It doesn't have to be through us. They can come together, get separate fights together, do it, um, and select somebody to help the negotiations. I'm sure I can go, um, regarding Greg and his time, that's. Um, but it, but it continues to be something that should be addressed, we can help them out, help out all the towns a lot. Washington, they had their own vehicle, um, but it needs to be replaced, and it's, so very exciting to, plus, um, and they're kind of building a trick, so they're going to pass on. So, um, I don't know how to solve that, uh, we're, we don't have a lead on that, so it's some kind of advisory. Or not, but somehow it'd be great to get, get that, get them some support, um, just that. Uh, Hinsdale on the 31st, same thing. Um, Wiltshire was one of the towns that actually voted against the school project, the four towns, um, and, uh, the letter to the select board that I received, um, essentially says it in the top. So, again, a lot of, a lot of hurt feelings over this, um, I've been working on it a lot, um, obviously, but, uh, my back is the select board, last night, that being, um, another step, the select board is always on top as well. Um, she's still, um, I, I talked about, uh, bringing this back to the three towns. And in all my discussions with all the towns, I've mentioned to all of them that if there's changes, then, um, the agreement would essentially happen next spring, or maybe a special town meeting. If there's no changes, then we'd like to send it back to the three towns that voted it down. Um, and I asked for the select board to support the passage of that, um, which, uh, which they all said that they wouldn't support the passage. There's no change to the regional agreement, um, so there's really nothing additional for them to, uh, support passage, even though we, we did do a lot of work to understand, like I said, what can and can't be in the agreement. Um, and that really leaves us with, uh, with, with trying to figure out what to do from here. I'm, I'm honestly, I'm kind of stumped. Um, I, I would like nothing more than to wrap this up. Um, you know, I'm, I'm the, one of the first people on the committee, I'm, um, I'm still here, not sure why sometimes, but I'm still here, and there's a lot of good things in there, um, that have gotten done, um, but we haven't gotten everything that sounds wrong. And again, that's, that's controlling by law. If, if we send this back to Hinsdale, Peru, and Covington, uh, obviously, under town moderator for Hinsdale, I will be at the meeting. I will recuse myself because it's just not fair to them that I'm, uh, chair of the ad hoc committee and their moderator, so I'll, I'll step aside for that vote. Um, but the select board, um, is against it. Uh, so, you know, it could, it could pass, residents could, um, see the wisdom in, in, um, capturing the gains that have been done, even though, you know, we can't, we can't get everything, so that the residents may, may pass it. Um, Peru would be June 7th. Covington, they've, um, obviously, uh, they don't, they don't know it's necessarily coming back, but it could be an option, and so they, they would need to decide if they're going to have a, a special town meeting, um, for that. Um, so that's, that's kind of where we're at with that. If we don't do anything with it this year, um, I don't know how much interest there is in continuing it. So, in a sense, we would, we would lose the gains that have been done, and, and there's some good things in there. Um, there's budget roundtable in February, there's cleaned up withdrawal process, updates to Mass General Law. Um, Todd knows there, there's a lot more in there that we, um, that we got done. Um, I've talked to Jay Barry, who was our consultant on that, and, you know, as he says, none of the town, nobody ever uses that. It's just, um, just isn't really done in the state. Um, so, if we send it back to the towns this, these three towns this spring, um, it could pass, um, but again, select boards are against it. Um, as much in Peru, um, essentially saying, you know how we feel about it. So it's tough. Um, and, and so I, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm kind of stumped, I, I don't really know what to do with this. I'd love to get it done. Charlotte, yeah, Charlotte wants to be chair now, thank you.
I just have a question, self-aware, but I don't want to.
Okay. Um, yeah, so, so there's that. I mean, there's, there's, um, you know, any, any policy district restricts the popular vote. I know it's not, um, there's, there's a lot of people that are against it on the committee, um, and I, I respect those opinions. Um, let's see, there's, uh, I don't know, and, and as I said, there's also, um, Section 14D, um, in the law, it's a controlling provision that, that allows the popular vote. So, um, you know, do we try and change the law? Um, and if there's not a single town veto, uh, there's less incentive to use N, um, you know, it, it could move the needle. I don't know, that could be an MASC thing. Um, we would need to get a resolution for June and make sure that all the towns are important that, and vote of the school. That's, that's kind of where I am. Charlotte, I'll, I'll take your suggestions, questions, suggestions, please.
I mean, I guess it, just to sort of make sure that we're saying this correctly, it seems like at this point in time, pretty much our only option prior to these, um, annual town meetings is to send it as it is to those three towns and see what happens. Um, but my question is, if, as you are predicting that does not pass, um, have we actually visited the possibility of revising and adding, uh, language and sort of protective, uh, additional steps to, uh, the process of using popular vote? Um, and then referring it back to all seven towns? Uh, because I, yes, I certainly think that this might be pursuing the legislative, um, changes, but I also think that we should update our regional agreement, and, um, at the end of the day, we, we are restricted by, um, law and what we can and can't do, but we can certainly, um, you know, hold up our end of the bargain in terms of saying, you know, we're not going to pull fast one.
Yeah, and, and that, um, uh, that idea of, of pulling a fast one, um, as, as I've heard, um, really, really comes from the motion to incur that and the motion to use the popular vote were embedded, um, in the singular motion for both the feasibility study and the vote on the new high school. So separating those out, you know, having a policy or, um, changes to the regional agreement that would separate that out, that would create an advance notice clause that would give the select boards time, that would make notice if the school committee ever wants to use, uh, the popular vote again. Um, you know, it still leaves the option of using the popular vote, um, which some people are just firmly against, um, regardless of the facts. Um, I think it helps, I think doing it in policy helps.
Well, I guess my question is, have we pursued that at all on the regional ad hoc? Because I, I, we can change policy, we, as this, as this body, any policy, some committee can change policy. So, um, it makes more sense if the towns want additional measures and they want reassurances that we fill those assurances into the document that is theirs, right, that they get control. But ultimately, I'm just wondering if that has been pursued on the, the regional side of things, um, or if it will be pursued, whether this upcoming vote, uh, potentially fails.
Um, I have not sent it off to DSE for preapproval yet, which has been the process to develop stuff, send it off to DSE for preapproval before it goes, goes to all the lawyers. Um, if, yeah, if there was that change, it would go to every single town, um, to be revoted, and could be a special town meeting, could be next year. Um, it, it has not gone, I, I have not had a rack meeting since I finished all this work with the towns. Um, and, and I just want to correct something. Um, I don't know if it would actually, if this agreement as it is, I don't know if it would actually fail in the towns. The select boards are against it, for Peru and Washington, but the residents may not be, right?
Yes, my, my personal opinion and suggestion would be, let's see how the vote goes, um, and then if it fails, then I think that we should pursue, um, making amendments to the regional, to the proposed regional agreement and see what happens.
Yeah, uh, um, it also, it also runs the risk of just keep sending this back over to the towns until they yield, and that's, um, that's not my language, that's just sort of language from the towns, and it's, um, uh, I've heard people some, mention it, um, essentially, it's, it's kind of insulting to just keep sending it back without changes. So it's.
What I'm saying is.
Would, right, not send it this spring.
I mean, it's, I think it's going to go before those three towns, you know, and let's see what happens, but yes, I, I suspect that if things have not changed, I would agree, they're probably not going to pass it, and if and when that happens, let's make a change and send that back to all seven towns. Um, that's my suggestion, but I'm going to be quiet.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it's, it is certainly, but, you know, one of the ideas, there, there is a risk of reputational harm by keep sending it back without changes, so, um, just the those three towns. For those three, yeah.
Yeah, um, so I wouldn't support opening up the agreement again. I think that will just be opening up another can of worms, we already went down that road. There was strong participation by all towns around the voting method during the rack meetings. You were there, David, you know, Hinsdale was part of it, all the towns have voted and have had strong participation. Um, if we open it back up, it's just going to be, somebody has an issue with this other part of the amendment, and it's going to just go on and on and on, and I understand, trying to please everybody, but I don't think we can do that. I think what we came up with is probably the best that we can do. Um, that's just my opinion, and I just wouldn't support reopening it again.
Yeah, and I, I support not going back into this for another four and a half years. I mean, it, when you look at it, you know, some work was done in, you know, 2010, 14, 18, I mean, this is just, I mean, even, um, like I said, I'm, I'm like the last of the original group on this, um, not even, uh, people that start, the rest of the people that started this initiative aren't even on the committee, so, uh, you know, and, and Todd, you know how much time we've spent on this.
Just getting people from all seven towns to meet on one, it is logistically a nightmare, so.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, it's, it's been, there's, it's been hard, there's a lot of good things in here. Um, so that's, that's where we're at, and I would say, and, um, you know, as Hinsdale has commented, um, the questions come up about, you know, do the other towns that already approved it need to revote on it, and, you know, are they being prevented from revoting on it? So I would say that, um, if, and I, I would like to send this back out to the towns, um, even if, even though some select boards are, are against it, um, if we do that, we should also make notice to all the towns, and if they choose, if their select boards choose to revoke, um, for, or, I mean, you know, reaffirm their, uh, vote for or choose now to vote against it, um, I do believe that they should be notified and, and given the opportunity if that's what they want to do. I don't think many towns would, but, um, this is not our agreement, this.
If they already voted to approve it, we're asking three people to say, hey, do you want to bring it up again? Like, I don't.
Um, four, four towns have voted in favor.
Right. Their select board can say, hey, do you want to let your town vote again? Even if it's the exact same.
Yeah.
Agreement that they already voted on?
I think we should let them know what's happening.
But they already voted.
I know, it's their choice.
Well, we can let them know that we're going to bring it to the other three towns again.
Yeah. It's, I mean, it, it's about transparency. It's, I mean, it, it's about transparency. I hear you.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I mean legally, I don't know where we are in terms of like, is it up to them to say, let's take another vote, or I don't know?
So, you got, wait a second, do you got something to share with me, you want to share?
Well, well, I do think, I think it's very difficult to, well, I think bringing it back unchanged is modest insulting to the towns, that, so, if you want something new, this is nothing that, I don't know how to say, how to say, it's, it's been there once, you know, personally, although I, I mean, it seems to me, we can't change state law, and that's, that's the issue, it's the whole popular vote, I mean, I'm not sure just because we don't like it and we know we can't change state law, but we still don't like it, so we're not going to look for it. I, that, you can't reason against that because it's by reasonable position, so, I, I send the thousands, I think we have to wait probably several generations until all the bad news is done, and then all the several votes here who don't remember what happened, that is bad.
This is going to become the subject of town lore and growing, which felt like it just because of what they've heard from other members of the towns. This is where, this is, this is where we are at this point, and I understand wanting to bring, making, letting the other four towns that have already approved it vote again, makeup of select boards have changed since the original vote, maybe some would want to take it up again, I don't know, or they would just say, we've already voted to approve it, let's go. I just, I think that I, I'm, I am in agreement with Charlotte to bring it up for a vote again now, see if maybe we can get to the, the population of two out of the three holdout towns to approve it, fingers crossed, because there really isn't any other changes we're going to be able to make to this document that's going to appease the select boards. You and I have had this discussion over and over again. You can't say you're going to do something and agree to something that's not going to hold up in court ultimately, especially when you're in a body such as a school committee. If it's going to get thrown out of court, there's no point in putting it in, down on paper and saying, we agree to it. That's my stance. We can try to massage language to make it sound like, you know, we referred to mass general law and, no, whatever will sound good enough to somebody to make it sound like we still hear them out and we're trying to give them their way, but mass general law is what's really stopping us here. Other than that, we're just going to be going around in a circle.
Well, yes.
One thing we could do, if you want, if we were to just bring it back to those three towns, is just change your approach a little bit instead. So I'm thinking that with Dr. Halt working on this kind of bringing more families in, we could also have like a, a like pamphlet, like something like we do with budget, we could have like a one pager that kind of explains it to everybody when we walk in, you take it, and, and I think that's something that we didn't do, but it might be something that explains it to our families a little bit better. And then I'd have some talking points, because I, everybody asks me questions about it because they should, I mean, I, and I'm happy to answer them, but, you know, it's just changing our approach a little bit, we're trying to bring in more young families, we have a flyer that kind of matches it, we kind of make some, some points, and we try to reach a wider audience that way, and then I can speak to that as well.
Yeah, so.
I mean, we kind of, when we started to talk about this conversation, maybe a year ago, we kind of talked about what you're saying, like, and I still feel pretty firmly, I think that is important, like, the average person just has no idea what you guys are talking about. Before I joined the school committee, I had never heard of the regional agreement.
Right.
Like, I've, I've had to study and figure out what it is, the average person, like, my peers do not know.
So just like some.
So it's something to break it down, that the voters understand what you're saying, and not just relying on the select boards to, to give out the information, like, people have to understand.
And just take it to those three towns, because those are the ones that have the, the issues, and, and just say, you know, and then if that doesn't, doesn't.
Go ahead, Liz.
Please, it's informed.
Go ahead, Liz.
Um, I will, I will say that just because the select board doesn't support it in the annual town meeting or in their special meetings, doesn't make the town will vote for it, so we might have some luck with that, like I know in Windsor, we didn't have that language on our annual town meeting explanation, saying even the select board supported, because they did, and Windsor still unanimously voted for it. So with the work that Dave and then all the other regional agreement folk have been putting forward, we might have a good chance of it passing in the towns, now they have a little more explanation, but, again, still a toss-up either way.
Yeah. But, and, and I would just say that I would, I would go to all the meetings, all the select board meetings, to, to, I'm sorry, town meetings, to answer the questions on that.
Put all the emphasis on all the good stuff, and if you don't pass it, like, you're not, this is not going to happen.
Oh, I know, but it's, we sometimes, I, I look at this a lot of ways, just as a fact-based approach, and the reason for voting against it is an emotional-based approach, and, and that's, that's where there's sort of like this disconnect or blindness that comes in sometimes, is that I could say, here's the facts and here's all the good reasons, and they go, well, this happened and, and it, it really broke a lot of things, and.
Kind of build a new high school for, I don't even know when, but use, apply the emotional response to the good things and, and, and use, you know, emotional response to emotional response.
Right, and.
Actually, I, I still think that it is worth considering issuing a more formal apology. Yeah, I wasn't here when any of the votes were made, many of us weren't, and I think that, you know, yes, things were said and, and agreements were made that no one really fully understood, and so I don't think anyone's intentions were bad, but I still think it is the responsible thing to do, to apologize and say, we hear you and we see you, that we have hurt you, and, you know, we do apologize for that, and we are trying to, to move forward in a responsible fashion that protects you from future hurt.
I mean, I'd be more than happy to take, sort of add that to that approach, you could do that piece, that would be mine in response, and then also pair it with, like we said, something more informative, because I believe Sarah, that I, your average person doesn't understand what a regional agreement is, and that makes something really simple, and so change our approach in those two ways, I think I would, I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think that melts the emotion side and the fact side.
Right.
Okay, Liz.
If it's a formal apology, it shouldn't be from you, it should be from the committee.
Is there a regional agreement, all effect now, that's the one that was approved?
It was, the current, the current regional agreement is from like 68 or 69, and it was amended about nine times through 1997.
So the folks vote instead. I mean, one of the things I think we need to understand is then, all the stuff that happened before can still happen again, because the old regional agreement is a fact, without any of the good things that can be added to it.
That's, that's logic-based approach. Right, good. Just, Charlotte, just to follow what you're saying, that's actually where I started in November, was trying to get together with Hinsdale and a small group of us. I think, I, I think it models the restorative practice that we talk about in, in the district, and it, it's, you know, I, I think it's something that we should, as leaders in the district, should be able to do, and it's, it's not easy, you know? Believe me, I, I spent two hours with Hinsdale, select board Rich was there, it's not easy. And then we can finally end the conversation. So, is there anything, you go? Why not?
Should I say something?
You haven't chimed in yet.
I haven't chimed in. So I just question the value of me signing on an apology for something that I had nothing to do with, this was before my time, many, it was before many of the members' time who are here, is there an actual value or is it more a symbolic kind of thing?
So to your point, but they're still mad at us, yes. They're mad at the body.
They're mad at you.
Because they're mad at the body that is the school committee, not, doesn't matter who the members or the makeup of that school committee, like, I got, I was, I came onto the school committee just after that vote, so I think Rich and Barbara were the only two that are still here, and.
There's a few of us.
For that, we don't know. Yeah, so.
We weren't charged, but we were members like you, I think. The, the committee has not changed, but the membership has.
Yes.
It's the same committee.
Yeah.
So, okay. And, thank you for, I really want to stop talking about it, so, but, I, I honestly, I mean, we do need to let all the towns know, if, I know that they don't have to revote on it, we're not asking them to revote on it, but just for transparency and communication sake, to let them know what's happening. Okay? Anybody else? All right, thank you. Superintendent Anhak.
Hi. We met on, on March 25th, and at that point, Wesley shared information, and getting us using a self-assessment of the superintendent's performance rating scales, she guided us through the documents, we were able to see the goals as well as the links to evidence, the report was robust and very helpful. The next step is for the subcommittee to meet again, which we will do in May, to collaboratively work on using the data to complete one goal on the superintendent's evaluation as a practice prior to completing the rest of the evaluation. So we do it together and then we would do it separately. At the next meeting, we'll also determine who will complete the evaluation, do we open it up to the whole school committee or complete it with the Anhak committee, and we discuss some pros and cons, and when I spoke to the people at Berkshire Hills, their committee, they only used one person to complete it. People were allowed to give input, but only one person put it all together, so we'll talk about how that's going to look for us, because we certainly value lots of opinions. And the interesting thing is that Wesley is leaving, and so this will be good practice for us for when Mike takes over and we'll have to do this annually, you know, Wesley only had to do it every other year with Wesley, so this will be a new thing for us, so it'll be good practice. So we're going to set up our next meeting in May, and Jack, what's that?
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Earl.
Sure.
All right, so is there any old business? Any new business? Any remarks for the committee? Yeah, Barbara, oh, sorry.
Okay, I went to see guys at odds on Friday night, the first night, I just wanted to say how impressed I was, it was really a well-done performance, so kudos to everybody who worked on that.
Okay, see?
This is an update that has all information to it, we, the antigenetic acquisition that was being put forth on our behalf by the Berkshire Medical Commission, Williamsburg and, and Langsborough and North Adams, is supposed to be announced on March 31st, it's in the tent, and it has been held announced, so, and it may not happen because apparently Mass Save is spending too much money from the utility companies to be happy about on the $100,000 from the hospital, so, that seems a good thing, so, so, we wait.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? I might as well. This superintendent search, I, I think we had great conversation, we had a lot of good discussions about candidates, I am, I'm, I'm a little troubled, and I kind of struggle with it, that when it came to John Franzoni and the discussion, the comment was made about his affect, and I just, I feel like it was unnecessary and possibly unkind, and it, and it just sits with me. I feel bad about that, and, and I want to apologize, I want to apologize to John, but, but everybody else, I didn't have the clarity in the moment to speak up about it like Jake did, and, and thank you, Jake, sorry for not backing up on that. You know, we spend a lot of time talking about equity with our audits and the calendar, how many times have we gone over on that? You know, and our, you know, virtue signaling with, with changing names of holidays, and then to bring in a person's affect, which isn't part of the criteria for the job, you know, a person who manages not just one school committee, but five school committees, and not just one budget, but five separate budgets, it's a lot of work, and, and so, you know, I just want to apologize that, for not having the, the energy and the clarity in the moment to, to really speak up for that, so I, I feel like it was just unkind, unnecessary. I have one thing, I want to thank Beth O'Connor for the amount of work she put in to that search was well above and beyond the call of duty, and I thank her for that very much. Okay, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Some.
Second.
Dr. Crapries.
You can end this, ma'am.
Charlotte. Charlotte, thanks. Dr. Everwine. Todd Emerson.
Yes.
Mr. Frella.
Yes.
Helen Lutz Oris.
Yes.
Elizabeth Lousbury. John Mason. Stephen Moran. Elizabeth Oaks.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, please.
Sarah Tuckert, yes. Rich Peters.
Yes. Meeting adjourned, not by majority, by majority vote, but not unanimously. Lester?